And as time changes.
I guess the root of my question was though if someone applied for a permit today under the old ordinance or if they waited till tomorrow if this passed under the new ordinance, would the zoning affect either one of those decisions?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. It would not. If once, if a wind turbine company asks for a permit tomorrow before you have zoning, they have a vested right to have that used regardless of regulation you pass later. Once they receive their permit, that's the key trigger. Now, before they have a permit, they don't have that same right. So, that is true that that permit, you've had that permit process since 2009, so that already exists.
You know, as I'm learning every day as well as we're going through this Conference of Plan and what people have shared and have participated, there are hundreds of people participating in what they want. Now, you know, there is a land use map being developed and built from those, from what the people have shared. And so, as this process unfolds and we have a map of what people are okay with residential, okay with business and industry, okay with or not okay with, that's on a map. That's what the people said. That map will be presented to the people again and people have an opportunity again to say, "No, I didn't say that. I said this. This is what I meant there." We will all agree when it's all done, the map of what this community, the people of this community want us to look like in the future. The zoning part of that is just an absolute reflection of exactly what ten acres is. So, the people that tell me, "I don't want you telling me what I can do with my property," have the opportunity today to say what you want or not want with your property, you know? And when it comes down to the time of putting the ordinances in place that make that map real, there shouldn't be any argument, honestly. There should be absolutely no argument because the will of the people is right there on the map. And that's the process that I can't wait to get to the end of because, you know, the data's coming in now and the people are excited about the future of our community and they want to grow our population, they want to grow our opportunities for our next generations coming, and that's just exciting to me. So, you know, yeah, we are exposed right now to a lot of things, you know? Hog operations, I think, killing guts, you know? And so, that's where I'm at. But, you know, it's an improvement, Jim. I guess I'm, you know, without understanding what your thought process was there with that, I can't say I have to disagree with that today. We can continue to move on.
I think the other component that we don't talk enough about is the economic development package, which also has to be approved by the commissioners correctly. And as of yet, that is not been the case, so.
I appreciate your guys' comments and I too, like I said, again, I think that 2018-4 is amended and moving in the right direction. You know, I think there's not a person in this room that has talked at some point or another that hasn't told us that nothing's going to be perfectly right for everybody. We understand that. We know that not everybody's going to be 100% happy with it. But I feel the disorder is we've addressed the issues that we are capable of addressing at this time, and that's the sound issues. If you remember way back when we started talking about this, that was the first thing that was brought to us and talked about was the noise. And we have made adjustments to that. We have lowered that. And I think, and one thing that Dan and I, every time we've met and talked about this, I've said, "Dan," two things. In my opinion, I'm not writing an ordinance to strictly prohibit something. That's not my place.
Right.
And I, you know, I've said I never gave my personal opinions on these things either. I've tried to look out for what is the factor for the people of what, you know, as far as in the ways that what we can regulate. I've asked questions about the distance because I didn't understand that. How can we have something there about distance if we can't regulate distance? He explained that, that under a certain number of feet, it all falls under the noise. So, I get that. Mr. Miles made some, you know, just to give you an example, he made some conversation today about some things that he said at the last meeting. Those have been fixed. I mean, we do listen to what people say, even though people may think that we're just are up here spending an hour and a half and two hours listening to them talk and then moving on. A lot of time, a lot of thought, and I guess, like I said, my point is this is an improvement to what we had from 2009. There's been a lot of changes over 10 years. And I'm not saying that I'm interested in amending it again or looking at it. If we need to, we will. I mean, in my opinion, this is not by any means saying that we're locked into what we're doing, but I think we're going in the right direction and I think we've done what we're allowed to do.
So, this reflects the changes that you, is that?
And really, the five acre thing, as I said at the last meeting, was an arbitrary number. But the thought in mind was to try to protect those people who have one or two or three or four or five acres. And it could have been 20 acres, but I threw out five and that's what's in the ordinance. If we want to change it later, we can change it like this. But it was an effort, listening to the folks who particularly are against wanting to protect their rights to get them over the distance between what the current ordinance would allow versus what these amendments would allow.
Yeah, Phil's thinking there was, we received some feedback from landowners who said, "Look, I own, I own six acres, but the shape of that six acres is such that I don't have as much protection as I, as you might think I do. It's not a square. And I'm only 80 feet from the road, and that means I'm vulnerable to what happens on the other side of the road. So, I know it sounds like I have a lot of land, but maybe, maybe you didn't think about these irregular shaped lots." And Phil did some thinking about that issue and said, "You know, there could be people that because of the shape of their land, they don't have the protection we were thinking about." And he asked me to, again, move that back 400 feet because a five acre square was 466.7 feet measured from the center of a house, or the time to put the width of a house together, then it came out to about 400. And Jim's right, a lot of thought. That's a good example of the kind of hearing what people say and then reacting to it has gone into this ordinance, and that's just an example.
I definitely agree that there has been a lot of work done on this and because it's, and I too have not shared publicly my personal views because I do try to, I am a representative of the people, and that's the way I have to vote. But I appreciate that.
Okay, with that being said, then I will make a motion to approve 2018-4 as amended at this time. I had it open for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One second.
Any further discussion or questions?
To Mr. Miles' point, the conversion systems is in the view. It's been changed. If it wasn't that, it is now in its version.
Not to say before the vote, I do appreciate everybody's time and opinion, comments. I know I've heard from a lot of you here. We've talked a lot of you one-on-one. I've talked to a lot of you one-on-one multiple times. And like I said, a lot of discussion, a lot of time, a lot of thought into this, not only when we're sitting here talking about it and discussing it, but when we're away from here, whether it's talking on the phone with you guys, whether it's my wife hearing about it, which she just really loves, no she does. I'm pretty fortunate that she and everybody, my family, my friends and everybody. So, at this time, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for a question. All in favor of amending 2018-4 signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Next up, Dan, there's second reading on ordinance 2018-11, 2018-12, and 2018-13. I'll let you take them from there.
Ordinance 2018-11 establishes the Probation Department of Corrections Fiscal Year 2019 Grant Fund. This, the probation department has received a grant for $190,924 from the Department of Corrections for the 19th fiscal year. This grant requires that a new fund be created in order to administer the fund. These funds will be used consistent with a grant for probation services, including to, including but not limited to, the payment of compensation benefits for probation officers and other employees to pay for supplies, contractual services, and capital assets related to the program supported by the grant. This fund would be a non-reverting fund, standalone fund like most grant funds are, and this would add a new section to the county code in chapter 35. This is second reading.
Okay, so you guys have heard about ordinance, second reading, ordinance 2018-11. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval of 2018-11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Next.
Ordinance 2018-12 amends your policies for paid sick time, paid time off, sick time and holiday pay. There was, it has been your practice in the employee manual to provide paid time off, sick time, and holiday pay for full-time employees. Earlier this year, there was some confusion by department heads about whether part-time employees were paid for holidays. And so, in order to clarify your position that they are not, this ordinance makes changes to sections 202, or 602, 603, and 604, which make it clear that only full-time employees receive the benefits of paid time off, sick time, and holiday pay. This is second reading.
Second reading, 2018-12 amending employee handbook, part-time holiday pay. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second for 2018-12. Any discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then the next, and the last one is 2018-13.
This ordinance would amend your intermittent leave policies contained in your Family Medical Leave Act provisions of the employee handbook. The Department of Labor has made certain regulatory changes tweaking the FMLA rights as they relate to incremental leave, and incremental leave or intermittent leave primarily occur when a employee or a family member of the employee has to go to a doctor appointment. And the employee would like to leave for an hour or two hours to take care of that issue. And if they qualify under the Family Medical Leave Act, but they're going to work the rest of the day, some employers were not allowing, they were requiring employees to take an entire day off of FMLA. So, the Department of Labor has issued new rules. This ordinance would bring you into compliance with those new rules, which would mean that an employee could take increment as small as one hour of FMLA leave and not have to burn an entire day or half a day in order to do that. It also makes a conforming change under the Military Caregiver Act. That benefit has been expanded to up to 26 weeks if an employee needs to care for someone who's been injured in a military service. That had been 12 weeks and that has been increased to 26 weeks, so that change has been made. And it also then at the very end in 605.2, it helps department heads know how to calculate these, the intermittent leave as a fraction of a normal schedule. So, there is an outline in those special rules. This is second reading. Any other questions?
Okay, so the last one in front of us, 2018-13 amending the FMLA requirements to deal with the federal law changes. I entertain a motion for approval at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes three to zero. Moving on to new business, resolution 2018-10 approving the issuance of lease rental bonds by the redevelopment authority.
Yes, this resolution does two things really. You've, it approves the issuance of bonds by the redevelopment authority for up to $9 million for the sewer extension project, which you discussed at your last meeting when you approved the lease agreement between the redevelopment commission and the redevelopment authority. Those bond parameters are, these bonds would be 20 years with a maximum interest of 5.5%. I imagine that interest will be less in the market, but those are the parameters. The resolution also, in it, you also approve the redevelopment commission's exercise of the option to own the facilities when the bonds are paid. And again, you heard about this last time, but the idea is that the redevelopment authority will own the facilities as the issuer of the bonds. They will lease the facilities to the redevelopment commission. The redevelopment commission will then sublease the facilities to the regional sewer district, which will actually administer and operate the utility. So, this is the next step in that process for you. There are many steps left, but this is the next one. So, that's what this resolution would have you do today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve resolution 2018-10. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. Next up is Welbrook. That's what you're here for.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dana Jones, and I'm the executive director with Welbrook. And we wanted to do something to get back to the community. We thought that it would be really fun. We have a food truck. We want to set up the food truck downtown and serve everybody lunch for free, one time.
So, give me a little more information about what you're thinking, when, where, and how much space.
So, it'd be September 26. We'd like to set it up where the town is, in that parking lot, so we won't obstruct anybody with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that belongs to the city, so we don't regulate that.
Okay, or here, wherever.
The problem, I mean, here is the space, I mean, it is kind of limited on space. I don't know how much room you would need.
Maybe two parking spaces.
That's all we hear. We have this, that we don't have any space.
It's a Wednesday.
And we'd be here two hours.
Got a couple employee volunteers that want to check out that day.
Mark, is there? Where's Mark? Are you hiding Mark?
Hey, Janet and Judith, we're right here, right now.
There you go, you got it. There you go. There's an example of two, two office leaders right there. Take their spots and then, you need, we can get you a taxi for the day from wherever you park.
We'll just throw you on the food truck and drive you around.
The only, the only requirement we would have is proof of liability, which I'm sure Welbrook is more than fine with that. So, we need a proof of, of each one of you. Yeah, just whatever, proof of liability insurance. And if you can get that to Lori prior to, and after the, Mark can maybe show you where we're talking about sometime between now and then, or.
Okay.
Janet and Jennifer's spot, which is right down close.
Perfect.
We appreciate that, and everybody can mark their calendars.
Yeah, you're all with them.
Looks like we're all pretty welcome to lunch here today, or on September 26.
That's right.
I guess I'll make a motion that I would recommend approval on September 26 for approximately two hours for them to supply lunch out of their food truck here on the parking lot.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion?
I guess we ought to mark it off those two spots that day, make sure we get the right ones. Maybe we'll get some cones out there.
Well, nobody parked there.
We have cones too, so. We're trying to make this as easy as possible.
Yeah, we'll have it knocked off for you before.
Put it out before eight o'clock.
Before eight o'clock, because once they don't park there, somebody else will think they can, so. We'll get them marked off, it's only set aside for you.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next is the prosecutor has notified Lori that they have, oh, come to see us, huh? Go ahead, Rick.
We were just notified last week that our copier is on its last legs. Fixing they have in there. Now, it's temporary and may last a week, may last a month. Copiers run well over a million copies. We've had it for seven, eight years. We bought it as a refurbished company. The company that all the guys refurbishments and.
Billman, for the information, it's a 60-month lease. Lease payment is $206.95 per month. At this time, I'd make a motion that we approve the lease of the copier, repo copier, for the prosecutor's office. And any discussion or questions? The money is in the IT budget for the monthly lease payment. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three to zero.
Good to go.
Yep. I'll get this signed. It looks like it's going to be available in about 20 different places, so I'll sign it in a very good.
Okay.
Introduction, ordinance 2018-15, 16, 17, and 18 and 19. So, Dan, if you want to start with 15, we'll go from there.
The probation department of the courts have received several grants, which is great. Each one of them needs to do funds. So, ordinance 2018-15 would create the Veterans Court Problem Solving Grant Fund. This is a $10,000 grant that will be used as part of the Problem Solving Grant Program and will be used to provide training, incentives, chemical tests, participant transportation, evaluation, treatment, medical expenses, and housing as part of the Veterans Court Program. This would be a non-reverting fund, and this is first reading. Ordinance 2018-16, the Drug Court, Indiana Spring Court Problem Solving Grant Fund. Again, is a problem solving grant of $10,000. It would be used for the drug court's programs to provide training, incentives, chemical tests, participant transportation, evaluation, treatment, medical expenses, and housing. This would also be a non-reverting fund. 2018-17 provides for the Veterans Treatment Court Grant Fund, and that is a grant for $86,680 for the Veterans Court. And it would help pay the program coordinator, case manager, and also provide for a contract mentor coordinator and training for that mentor. That, this is also a non-reverting fund. The Drug Free Montgomery County Coalition, Local Coordinating Council Grant Fund is a $12,100 fund to the drug, for the drug court, and it would be used for various supportive of its programs, and that is the Drug Free Coalition. And that is 18. Ordinance 2018-19 is merely the codification of your investment policy. As you may recall, the council adopts the investment policy in terms of what restrictions are allowed on the investment of cash on hand for the treasure. It's quite a complicated policy. In the interest of government transparency, we recommend that you codify that policy so that everyone can see what restrictions you impose on the office holders. And although you didn't adopt the policy, this would actually put it in your code book in section 3621. And then ordinance 2018-20 with our amendments to chapter 157, private sewer disposal rules. And Amber, Reed has asked that certain changes be made to the sewer rules of 157. There are changes in definitions, changes in permit fees, and other regulations that she has requested, and those are shown in random in your ordinance. And again, this is first reading.
Okay, any questions for Dan on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 ordinances? As he said, those are all introductions, should all be on our agenda for action at our next meeting on the 20th. Okay. Nothing there is as time as you have been. Okay. All right. No questions, moving on to other business. Is there any other business?
No, no business. I guess I was just going to give that survey website and give it to the papers. So, Ron Dickerson shared with all of us yesterday, or day before, whatever it was, but the Tin County, all the neighbors, Tin County's, they have a $39 million grant of Lily for economic development. Their approach to economic development is not necessarily the way most economic development groups would operate in infrastructure and things like that. This is more around quality of place. What's, ag is huge in this, in our Tin County area, and technology and ag, precision ag is a, is a huge opportunity for investment, and it's also a huge opportunity for our family farmers is a big part of this. Anyway, there's a survey that, basically some, similar to what we're doing with the Conference of Plan and how, what you think, what our citizens think our opportunities are and what you'd like to see take advantage of. So, anyway, I do want to share that and give that exactly to the paper.
Anything for you, Phil? One thing I have is just an update. There'd be something coming out for department head elected officials in the very near future. As we try to get through the change in the insurance that we've made, there is some small issues we've had. We've had some good meetings with them. I will be in the process of finalizing a date here within the next week or two that they will come in with the department heads. I would like for somebody to try to attend from each office to gather some information. And then going forward, they want to set up a time, maybe like every 30 days or so, where representatives can make theirself available so that if an employee is having trouble with claims and stuff, they can help work through this. I just got an email from Jennifer that was forwarded to me late last week of another one that's been going on that I had no idea about. And we can't fix things that we don't know. So, I immediately fired it off, and I think within an hour or two, they were in contact with this person trying to help work through the issues and stuff like that. So, we are trying to, to make this work as it should. And so, if you're a department head or elected official or running an office, just be prepared for an email from Lori's with a date and time when that'll take place. And I think that's all I have. So, other than that, moving on, is there any more public comment? If so, the same rules and everything as you heard before, step up and state your name and address and that'll be it.
Seth Howe, 2210, North 625 East Garlington. Had a few things to say afterwards. Back on the five acre thing, I just don't see how that was extra protection. I really don't. I mean, we had an initial reading that gave an all-inclusive protection of what people as a five acre beginning. So, I just don't, I don't believe that, but it's a tissue council. A few things I did kind of touch on that I want to talk about anyways was the initial ordinance did have a lot of good permitting, good permitting process, I believe in it. And I just want to make sure that's strictly followed. One concern is, we've mentioned before, is decommissioning costs. Just want to make sure we get accurate estimates of that. We're getting to the age now where these things are getting taken down to several hundred thousand, millions of dollars potentially per turbine to get this down. I just want to make sure we, you know, a lot of times when you do these things, you get three independent estimates. estimates out of each type of thing. I just want to make sure that's, that's followed. And then just enforcement of, you know, we're going to be dealing with people potentially out of this country that's going to have a big impact on our lives, and I don't know, if somebody's not pertaining to this 50 decibels, how do we shut this down? If you see testimony after testimony online, people, when they'll scream in their backyard and nobody to talk to, I think it's something that county should look into, some kind of disconnect switch where you can kill that thing to be able to enforce your, be able to enforce it. As we've talked before, I mean, people even said, Rock even said, they're, these things are getting taller. I mean, they're talking 600, 800 feet here, as tall as the biggest building in Indiana. We're talking wing spans of five, over 500 feet, and close to two spanning football fields. I mean, everything we've been fighting for is just evidence based off the 300, 400-foot turbines. I think we're making a big mistake by putting closer even than this 2640. For instance, I built a scale model of one, I'm sure you'll see it around soon, but GE came out with a model that, or a four turbine that is 787 feet tall, and when you put that next to a child's farm set, it's over 12 feet tall. I just think people need to be aware of what we're in for. If it does come up to revise this ordinance in the future, I think it needs to, because we're getting to such uncharted territories with these, these turbines, we're going to be getting pigs. I think if this does get re-looked at here between now and whenever, the setbacks will need to be a product of the height. So. That was really mostly what I had. Yeah, no, I just, I think, hopefully we can do kind of, I don't know how the permitting process is going to go, and hopefully that can be transparent as possible. There's a lot of steps that have to take place, and I thank you guys for having this in place back and having it before thoughtful 10 years ago for it, but I thank you for your.
Thanks, Seth. Appreciate it. Anything else?
Bunny Sutton, 2191 East 875 North. 875 North is just up the road here. We are literally the only house on that entire section of road, and it's the only section of road in this entire county. It's just a little gravel road. That test tower, my best guess without going on someone else's property is a couple of football fields from my barn. Saturday, my husband and I were outside working in the barn. Power tools, door shut, and we kept hearing this noise. We went outside, there's just a big plastic protector on one of the cables, and the cable was bouncing. At least 200 yards away, I can hear. I have no idea what 50 decibels is, but if I can hear that plastic bouncing on that cable from at least 200 yards, I guarantee you I'm going to be able to hear that wind turbine. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else? Anybody else?